Okay, well, I've got seven o'clock, so I guess we can get started. Hopefully Leslie will be with us shortly. So as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda. Are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
George Morris?
Yes.
Leslie Matthews, I guess Leslie is not with us just yet. Woody Knight?
Yes.
And I'm told Mary Stone will not be with us tonight. Town staff, again, when I call your name, if you please respond. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
And anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Robert Rosine, Waterstone Engineering?
Yes.
And Tom Zerico, ZenCo LLC?
Present.
Good evening, the December fourteenth, twenty twenty two open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with chapter one oh seven of the Acts of twenty twenty two, which extends the governor's March twelve, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty until March thirty one, twenty twenty three. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. I don't know if you can hear that, there's a dog in the background. Public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to HTTP colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S and entering meeting ID eight three two seven one four one three zero five six, or by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine U S, New York, and entering the meeting ID number one prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that the attendees are participating by video and or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and that's WWW dot T N C T V dot org. The recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials, meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen, please state your intention after you have been called. Because we turned to the first item before we turned to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or your phone star star six to toggle mute unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds and earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so for me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. For public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. Video participants, video conference participants to raise your hand over over the button, the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by this order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the participant or applicant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submission of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, note that the each vote taken in the meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So done with the preliminaries. I think we can turn to the first item on the agenda, which is the discussion of our January twenty twenty three meeting schedule. Our normal meeting schedule, our first meeting would be January fourth and I asked that this be put on the agenda to to see if that raised any issues for anyone coming so quickly after the holidays and out of concern that it might, we might have people who are not available on that date. So Martha, your thoughts on that?
Um. I think at this point I was, I was concerned that I might be one of the people who would not be available either on that date or between now and then, but that's, it's not an issue for me. So if it works for the other board members, I think we could, we could keep with the.
Oh, and I know Leslie is Leslie Matthews is with us now as well. Evening Leslie. The yeah, the other alternative would be to continue or have our first meeting on January eleventh. But if we, if we do get out of our regular schedule, at some point, we will need back to back go weekly back to back meetings just to catch up and get back on schedule. So does anyone have any thoughts about this, Pete?
I'm comfortable with leaving it on the fourth.
George, you, you okay? You're muted, George. George, you're muted. Is that better now?
That is much better, thank you.
It went off on its own apparently. Yeah, the fourth is better for me on the eleventh, I'm tied up otherwise.
Okay, Leslie, you okay with the fourth as well?
Yes.
Yeah, Woody, is that okay with you?
Yes, the fourth is fine.
Alright, so and I agree, so we'll just keep our regular schedule for the first and third Wednesday of the month. The November twenty twenty two financial report. I'll read, so for November twenty twenty two payroll warrants for the Planning Director PR twenty three dash ten for the pay period ending eleven three twenty twenty two and PR twenty three eleven for the pay period ending eleven nineteen twenty twenty two were paid. For planning board expenses, we had the Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad rent lease of the week eleven twenty nine twenty twenty two, which was paid. And for escrow accounts, Joe Joseph Selecta Engineering Review one forty our Main Street, so a special permit modification eleven eight twenty twenty two. And that was also, I'm sorry, the date of submission was eleven eight twenty twenty two. So we have a little time before eleven, before seven fifteen. So do you want to go into? Martha, if you want to do the planning director's report?
Sure. Since I've been away, I don't have a lot to report, but one thing I would like to bring up is the MBTA communities zoning again. Our action plan is due to be submitted at the end of January. And it's something that we really, as a, as a board, have not discussed since the initial, basically since the initial letter was written last year in terms of reactions and that kind of stuff. One thing that we do need to do is to identify a couple of areas in town that we think might be appropriate for the multi, multi-family zoning by right. We're not bound to have it within half a mile of the Newbury Port train station, since we're considered an adjacent small town. But what I would like to suggest if the board is open to this is that we have a workshop specifically focused on the MBTA community, so we can talk about potential areas which we will not be bound to. I think this is what the state is looking for us to do is to basically indicate that we are, you know, making a good faith effort to be in compliance. There, there are tools being developed to that will help us actually identify areas where, you know, fifteen fifteen units per acre will be appropriate. We can either get technical assistance through mass housing. MVPC is is one of the entities providing technical assistance, or we might be able to work with them directly through local technical assistance. But anyway, I would, I'd like to suggest that we hold a workshop so we can actually discuss the action plan and some areas in town that might be appropriate.
And this we would have to do before the end of January?
Yeah, I would like to actually suggest that we do it as early in January as possible. I haven't been able to talk with Tracy yet. I attended the MP PC Mayor's and Managers Meeting yesterday. It was a session focused specifically on the MBTA community zoning. And so they were town administrators and managers and and mayors from different municipalities in the region. So I would like to coordinate with Tracy on, on sort of what our, what our path will will be in terms of submitting the action plan and, you know, running it by the select board and that kind of stuff. So I think the earlier, the better, earlier in January would be better to give us enough time.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think a workshop, special workshop, that would be appropriate. Otherwise, you know, if we try to fit it into a regular meeting, I'm afraid we wouldn't have enough time to consider it. So do you want to talk to Tracy and get back to us with some dates or how do you want to handle that?
I could do that, or we could, we could discuss some dates now and you know, at least have, have a board discussion if if anybody else is available to join in, certainly issue, you know, issue that as an invitation. Otherwise, we can just send an email out afterwards and.
Well, that's fine. If you have some suggested dates and.
I don't really right now. I guess one question would be whether we, whether we want to try for an evening meeting at some point or whether, whether daytime would work. So if it would be easier, I could just put together an email and send it out and try to get, get some, get some suggested times.
Is, yeah, I'm, I'm certainly available either evening or during the day. Pete, how about yourself?
Yeah, I am too, and I was just looking at the first week in January, just so that we'd have some cushion in the process. Is there a day during the week that's a good time for you, Martha, a particular day?
Um, right now, I think we're off on the second. That'll be our January first holiday. My days are actually pretty open at the moment. On the third and the fifth, the fourth, we've got our planning board meeting.
Yeah, the fifth, I have a midday doctor's appointment, eleven thirty, but other than that. Are you anticipating a Zoom meeting or live meeting?
That's a good question. Yeah, I don't, I actually don't know. In some ways, it would be easier if we could, or maybe nicer if we could do it in person, just so that we could actually have like the big zoning map up on front, in front of us. Although I could also pull my map on the screen and we could talk about it that way. So I guess whatever the board's preference would be.
Yeah, no, I'd be inclined to go with the in-person meeting. Pete, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I'm fine, just kidding.
George, are you, you comfortable with that as well?
No.
Oh.
Upper my, so for me, it's not, not good to do.
Right. Yeah, I had forgotten about that. Well, could, could George remote participate, Martha?
Yeah, absolutely. If we do it in the hearing room. You know, we can, we can do a hybrid that way.
That's good.
That good for you, George?
Yes.
Yeah, and Leslie, how about yourself? You're muted.
I'm open for a a meeting with everybody.
Okay, and Woody, are you comfortable with that as well?
Yes, that's fine. And I just have a quick question. We have to post this meeting, right?
It would be, yes.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, yeah, we'd be posting it as a workshop because it will be a quorum with the board.
So I don't know what you, it, it, the, the third seems a little aggressive or you know, given everything. I mean, do you want to talk about the fifth, though? We could go to the following week.
Right, I mean, the fifth. How much time do you need around your appointment?
It's eleven thirty, probably take about an hour. It's in April, so.
So we could either try for maybe in the afternoon or else we could look at, at the ninth.
I'm wide open on the night. Up until up until about two forty five.
And anybody else have a preference?
My preference would be the fifth, not the ninth for me, because I do have other pressing issues.
How about maybe two thirty on the fifth?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking something along the same lines. The only other thing I'll have to do is see if the hearing room is available that day.
It, is it possible to do it maybe a little bit earlier?
Sure. It's on you, Larry, which.
Yeah, no, I, I, I said I was available around that doctor's appointment, forgetting I have to pick up my grandkids from school at three fifteen in the report. Well, why don't we, why don't we? I don't know, if we wait for the perfect day, I guess it'll never happen. Could we do two o'clock on the fifth, that work, assuming that the room's available?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Okay. All right, why don't we shoot for that, Martha, and if you can see if you can set that up and just let us know.
Okay, if there's any conflict with the hearing room, I'll let you know, and then we can either consider choosing another time or else actually doing it via Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll check that after our meeting and let you know. And I know we're a little past seven fifteen, but I also would really encourage everybody to attend the CPTC MBTA Communities Workshop next, next Monday, the nineteenth. I think it's at five thirty, I sent the announcement out. But I think that will also help everybody with the context for this rather than hearing it just from me.
Okay. Anything else, Martha?
No, that's it for now.
Actually, I have a question for you before we move into the public hearings. You have been without an assistant for quite some time, and I know the position's been funded. Where are you at and filling that position?
I believe that we, we may be close to filling that position.
Good, I think you, you've been doing, we've been carrying a lot on your shoulders over the, you know, last few months of essential, you lost Emily, so we appreciate that. And certainly should hopefully get that, that position filled quickly.
Well, thank you. I mean, I'm just, I'm glad that we're not back in the days of having nine active applications and public hearings all going on at the same time. It would, would have been a little tougher, but thank you.
All right, so maybe we can turn to the public hearings now. So we have the first item is continued public hearing, special permit application one forty our Main Street. Now, our forty one lot forty two requesting modification of the special permit granted to Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. On May sixteenth, twenty eighteen, will allow construction of the utility access road, including a bridge in the location of an existing cart path. The applicant New Leaf Energy Owner Karen A. Yuser and Theo Karen E. You said Theo and KB and you say successive trustees of the Ruth A. Yuser Trust, one thirty eight Main Street, Byfield, Mass. Zero one nine two two. So I think we will open the public hearing and we have the applicant's representative, Rob Rosine, to give us a summary of where we are, Rob.
Great, yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Robert Rosine with Waterstone Engineering, and I'm joined by Jared Connell, Vice President of Development from New Leaf and John Cronin Counsel. And so it's been some time, it's been about, well, actually, before I get to that, I need, I should apologize in advance. Somebody's coming, coming home soon and my dogs are going to go nuts. Hopefully, we're done here before, I'm not sure when he's coming in. Dogs are going to go nuts. There's no preventing that. I apologize. So it's, it's been a bit, it's been a little while. I think it was September last we met. And there's, there's been a lot of activity, but I think we actually, we can keep this fairly short. I'm happy to elaborate on, on any particular items you guys might like. But to summarize where we've been, since we last met, we, we had, we received CONCOM approval last week. And the primary issues we've been dealing with have been what I have been all very, very positive. But meaning that they have really helped us advance from a permit plan set to really, really a construction drawing plan set. So we have things like turning analyses and refueling areas identified, a lot, a lot of the details that would be necessary for us to issue a construction plan set. In terms of what you have seen, we really very little has changed. About the only thing that has changed is the, the road has been shortened by approximately a hundred feet. We still go down to the same location. We just don't need to push the road quite so far down. And, and part of that is because of the additional turning area that we, we provided closest to the new poles on behalf of the fire department. So that was really, I think, the most substantive thing was really the review by the fire department and approval. About a week or so ago, we, we met with the planning department and Mr. Swatka has done the third party review, went through all the various items and the, the fire department has approved what we've got here in front of you. And I think that's probably it. Oh, yeah, sorry. What one last big thing is the third party review was the major revision that you have received had come in since then. So that's actually why we had delayed additionally, so that the, the, the plan set that was issued in November includes all of those. And we received the response to third party review today. And I realize not everybody may have had a chance to review it, and I can tell you, after having reviewed it, essentially, it's all, we're all good with, with maybe one exception. He, he noted that the side, the roads, roadway side slopes have been changed from one to one to three to one at his recommendation, which was, which is a fine recommendation, but he noted that the temporary construction road was still left out one to one, so that those slopes will need to be maintained as, as necessary during the construction period. And, and that is, that is correct, that's absolutely the case. We did not intend to do the temporary road at a three to one, because it will, it would increase the impact that much more. We really don't want to increase impact beyond necessary, because if you recall, we have two roads, we have a twelve foot permanent road and we have a twenty foot temporary road. And the twenty foot temporary road is necessary to bring in the, the large crane. So with that, I think I will, I'll pause and, and I'm happy to go into questions, if you have any, about the operations and maintenance plan or the turning analyses or the conversation with the fire department, etc. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Martha, before I turn to the board members, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think Rob covered it pretty well. As he noted, we had a, a, it's kind of a technical review meeting on December first, which included Joe Swatka, Chief Janveren and Lieutenant Grant from the Fire Department and Samantha Hold from our Conservation Agent to review, review the plans and other submitted materials and the responses that Rob had put together. And as he noted, the fire department was satisfied that their conditions had been met or will be met by the time the project comes online. There are a couple of outstanding things, one is the training and the other is the location of the Knox boxes. And that will be coordinated with Rob to make sure that that gets done. And we also discussed, you know, some, some of the comments that, that Joe Swatka had put together, put in his first review letter. And if you all had a chance to see the, the follow-up letter that he sent, and I apologize, he actually sent it last week, but I didn't see it until this week. As Rob noted, there were just a couple of things. One was about the side slopes and then the others comment regarding Army Corps approval and that Rob will be going for that after, after these approvals are done. And Joe suggested that that might just be noted as a condition in the planning board's approval in, in the decision if the board should choose to do so. And that's typical, the decisions usually, you know, require approval from any other permitting agencies.
Thank you, Martha. Pete, do you have any questions, comments?
Well, first, Rob, I'm glad that this is getting close to the finish line for you. I know it's been quite a, quite a process and a task. My only comment at this time is there was a letter that came out today, I guess, about the tree fund and I just. Oh, thank you. Yes, yes, yes. Right. And so I just, in reviewing that, I just thought it might be a good idea to have an opportunity for the board to review, maybe get some insight from some other perspectives as to how we judge what trees are worth, because, you know, I'm not sure how that's done. I just, you know, went to a tree calculator and just punched in some numbers and they looked very different. So I think we just need a little bit more guidance on that perspective. Okay, thank you for the reminder on that. Yes. So the one thing that we had discussed early on that I think is, is the last remaining item that, that I was aware of is the, is, is a tree compensation fund or payment. And so what, what, what was done in, in the twenty eighteen approval, there were about sixteen hundred trees that had been cleared. And there was, I believe there's a provision in the regs, I, I don't honestly remember which, which provision that is, but I believe it's a provision in the regs that allows for the charging of clearing. And so with that, back in twenty eighteen, there was a thirty dollar per tree fee, and that was based on a certain caliper sized tree and installation. And so that was a twenty eighteen charge of thirty dollars per, per tree. I have not yet reached out to a a nursery or anything like that. So what I thought, what we did in, instead of that, was essentially just to offer to double the per tree cost at, at sixty dollars per tree. There's far fewer trees, we're looking at approximately a hundred and three trees here. And, and, and then use that as the tree fund payment consist, consistent with what we had done in, in twenty eighteen.
Any, any follow-up on that, Pete?
No, no, I, I just think you had to give the board some more insight, I think it's just.
Yeah, no, it's, I agree, and frankly, I have no idea how to, how to value those things. Martha, is that I? Can you help me here?
On the valuation?
We expect the. We expect all the answers from you, you know.
Oh, dear. And I do remember, excuse me, sorry. Back in twenty eighteen, Town Council Lisa Mead and I both did some research on that. Like, I quite honestly can't remember exactly how we came up with the, it was forty-eight thousand dollars for the for the sixteen hundred trees. So if, you know, if the board would like, we could certainly kind of go back and, and see what was used at the time. I remember I did find one calculator that actually did it based on dollar value for per acre of cleared trees. And I I think yeah, so that I'm afraid that's about all the light I can shed on it right now.
I mean, it's certainly out of my wheelhouse, but intuitively doubling price per, per tree from two thousand eighteen seems reasonable. But George, do you have any any questions or comments?
Yeah, not any particular comments. Sorry, the only question, the valuation of how we get from up to double. Considering inflation now, the cost of trees and everything else, might have gone even up quite a bit since two thousand eighteen. But I think it's just looking at the analysis that Martha and Lisa Mee had done earlier. And we could sort of reach for me to come up with a figure that makes sense. Really dealing with a small number of trees is a practical matter. Thank you.
Wesley?
Is there any plan on what happens to the trees after they're cut?
So, no, I, I'm, no, nothing in particular, other than I, I'm, I'm sure there will be called off and used by the, by the logging company. Some of the smaller trees will be particular, will be the smaller trees and shrubs will actually be stored or reused for a lot of, for some of the replanting areas. In particular, for the laydown area, we have a number of trees and shrubs that will need to be replaced in, in that, in the temporary laydown area, because that laydown area i- is, is, is thirty by two hundred and that area will be reduced down to a portion of it will be left as twenty as one of those passing areas, but the majority, but and then the rest of the portion will be reduced back down to twelve feet. So that, that, that the temporary laydown area has a number of additional trees and shrubs that will be used to replace that. And so the plan is that, well, I'm sure we, there are actually not that many. So we'll have, we'll have way in excess of all of that. I'm not sure that answers your question, because you did not specifically about the laydown area, more specifically about what's happening to the lumber. The lumber, I, I would imagine that's, that's part of the price typically with clearing is, is a company will come in and they'll, they'll get, get a sense of what the value of that is.
Can you tell us what the actual size of the land that the trees will be coming down? What size, how much land is being cleared?
Yes, I can. So the tree clearing plan, give me one moment here. We have, so there's, there's a point six acres that are going to be cleared, so fairly small area. And for a total of a hundred and three trees, that would be forty-seven trees in the six inch to eleven inch range, forty-five trees in the twelve to twenty-three inch range, and eleven trees in the twenty-four inch plus range.
So we're talking just about twenty-four thousand feet or half an acre?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody, do you have anything?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha, do we have any public comments or questions?
I haven't received any, any written comments. I don't know if anybody from the public is here who would like to speak to this.
See raised hands?
I'm not seeing any raised hands right now.
Okay. Certainly. Rob, is there anything else you wanted to add?
The, the only thing that I would like to ask is, is if it's possible, i- if it's the board's favor that, that we're getting close, if we could if the, if, if the board would consider maybe a straw vote, straw poll this evening in, in terms of whose how this might come, I realize we need still to draft the, the permit modification language. But it's not, 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 not to be too pushy or anything, but there's, there's a lot of folks wa- waiting on pins and needles. And I think once, once they have a sense that we're close, folks are going to rest a lot easier. So even though I realize that there wouldn't, we wouldn't get approval this evening because that, that will take a, a vote on the actual special permit modification. I was wondering if, if we feel that we've addressed the majority of the issues. If, 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 at your, at your pleasure, Mr. Chair, if you consider a straw vote.
Yeah. Actually, assuming that the board is in favor, I, I think if I, I'd like to move this ahead towards drafting a decision. But let's do exactly what you suggest. Pete, your feelings?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable. I just want to get a little bit of feedback on that tree piece, but Rob, I think you're, you're, you're real close to the finish line.
Yeah, I, I assumed the, the piece about the trees would would be a condition and we, we can work that out. Was it George, your?
I would agree to go ahead with it.
Okay, Leslie?
I have a question and then I can answer. What's the estimated time of the removal for completion to move forward? And then, you know, depending on that, other than that, I'm comfortable with it.
So the, so we don't actually have a schedule yet, but in talking with the, the contractor, what, what I'm anticipating is that it would be approximately a three-month schedule, probably a little less. And
That's the road, that's take the trees down and put the road in, correct?
That's everything. That's all, that's all in.
And still a bridge in that, in that formula?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's everything. And now why, why a possible change to that would be the start and finish line might, might be different. However, the the total duration would not. And what I mean by that is it, I, I don't know that they would do this, but it's tree clearing often is preferred to be done in the winter time. So it may be, so I can, I can tell you that the bridge construction will not happen until the summertime, which actually will probably work out great because it's a summer like this, we will have, you know, it'll be a low water condition. And, and that, that will make things quite a bit easier for the for the cart path removal. But it may make sense to do the clearing, the tree clearing this winter. I kind of, I'm going to guess that it won't. I'm going to guess that they will not mobilize twice, but I, I'm not, I'm not sure of that.
Thank you.
That answer your question?
It does. And, you know, with the factors that have been laid out, I think that I'm on board for going forward.
Okay, good. Thank you, Woody.
Yes, I'm comfortable with it.
I, I am as well. So I, I, I think we're in a, in a position to ask, I'm in a position to ask for a motion to request that Martha draft a decision for review, recognizing that, that, that the tree special permit Martha, or anything else you recommend, we can take a look at. So anyway, again, I'd entertain a motion to request that our, our town planner draft a decision for review.
So moved.
Thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Okay, any discussion on the motion, Pete?
Nope.
Discussion, George?
No discussion.
Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Question, Woody?
None.
Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so it's unanimous, Martha.
Okay.
Okay, Martha, anything else for Rob before we let him go?
Well, then the board needs to continue.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right. Do you want to, which is January fourth workable for you?
I think so. I'll, I'll be here over the holidays. That, that gives what, three? Three weeks? I think so. That, that, that should be all right. And I've got the former former decision that I can use as, as a basis for some of it. So I think that should work.
Okay. If unless anyone has any agreement, disagreement, or I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until our January fourth Zoom meeting at seven fifteen P M.
So.
I'm not sure who I heard first. I think it was George. Yeah. And thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
To Leslie, any discussion on the motion? Then Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes, sir.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. How, how would you like to close the loop on the, on, on the, on the tree compensation payment?
I think we're going to ask Martha to take a look at that.
Okay, I like that, Martha.
With a figure.
Martha, if I can help, let me know.
I will, thank you. But since the hearing is continued, we can, you know, still have, have that discussion.
Okay.
And if there, if, if, if everybody's fine with your number, then good and well. If not, we'll have a discussion on it. But there's no, I don't think there's any reason to hold up the drafting of the decision.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Okay, we all have a wonderful holiday. Thank, thank you again for your time.
Very good. Thank you.
Night, John. Good night, Jared. Thank you, guys.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is a new public hearing and what do you this is the, I'm sorry, let me read what's on the agenda, then I'll, I'll ask our clerk to read the public notice. So this is the application for modification of an approved definitive subdivision plan on property previously known as fifteen Coleman Road map R O two lots twelve and thirteen, requesting a waiver from the requirements of the code of the town of Newbury, Chapter one seventeen subdivision land section one seventeen twenty-one D to allow for a property line radius of twenty feet instead of the required thirty feet on the easterly side of the intersection of the subdivision road, Fieldstone Lane and Coleman Road, and approval of related changes to the area and frontage of lot seven, now number two Fieldstone Lane map R O two lot thirteen G and the layout and area of the subdivision road owner applicants and co LLC comes the Rico manager. So we'll open the public hearing and Woody, do you have the notice you can read?
Yes. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Harris Hearing News. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven fifteen, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtual virtually via Zoom. Consider an application submitted by then Sanco LLC Tom Zeruko manager for modification of an approved definitive subdivision plan for a seven lot open space residential subdivision on the property previously known as fifteen Coleman Road by Field Mass assesses map bar O two lots twelve and thirteen. Property owner Zenko LLC recorded at the Essex South District Registry of Deeds book four oh one seven oh page one sixty-five. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the requirements of the code of town of Newbury, Chapter one seventeen subdivision of land one seventeen dash twenty-one D to allow for a property line radius, radius of twenty feet instead of the required thirty feet on the easterly side of the intersection of the subdivision route, Fieldstone Lane and Coleman Route. And approval of related changes to the area and frontage of lot seven, now number two Fields. Now, our, our O two lot thirteen G in the layout in the area of the subdivision road as shown, says subdivision plan. The revised layout is shown on a plan entitled definitive subdivision open space residential development fifteen Coleman Road, Newbury, Massachusetts, oh, one nine two two. She thirteen point two definitive, definitive subdivision plan dated June tenth, twenty twenty-one revised to November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two prepared, prepared by Civil Design Group LLC for said code LLC. Copies of the plan are on file with the town clerk and in the planning office, well, can't wait. Suite one oh one by Field Mass. It may be viewed on the planning board section of the town's website. For more information or to obtain a digital or hard copy of the application, contact the planning by phone at nine seven eight four six five eight six two extension three one two. Or by email at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed subdivision plan modification are invited to participate in the hearing remotely at the designated time from their computer tablet or smartphone. At H T T P S dot, dot slash, slash, U S O two W E B dot C O O M dot U S slash J slash eight three two seven one four one three oh five six. Or by telephone by calling one nine two nine two oh five six oh nine nine. U S in using meeting ID eight three two seven one four three oh five six. Let me watch the meeting live on local access cable channel nine or at W W W dot T N C T V dot. And this was published in the Daily News, November twenty-eighth and December fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Woody. Martha, do we have proof of service about a notification?
Yes, we do. Tom scanned and emailed the green card receipts and the tear sheets from the Daily News along with the butters list.
Okay, so Mr. Zarico, if you could give us a brief explanation of what's going on.
Sure. Thank you all very much. This, this is really an administrative request. It's not a request that's that, that's born of, of a change to our plans at, at the, at the development site or any of the essential or critical elements of the development. This is in, in order to facilitate the more clear and defined transfer of the Fatherstone Witch Stone and, and a related parcel around that stone at the entrance to the subdivision, the intersection of Coleman. And the the change, as you can see visually, Martha, I don't know if you want to pull up the plan. The, the original plan had the, the required thirty-foot radius on the right of way on that easterly side, as it does on the westerly side as well. As most of you probably are aware, a, a property line really doesn't have, doesn't really have a thickness. However, when you put it on paper, it has to have a thickness or you can't see it. So the, the original property line appeared to be bisecting the, the stone and this radius reduction doesn't, doesn't change the access, the visibility or the, the safety of the intersection in any way, shape or form. It just more clearly shows that the, that the stone is, is, is outside of, of the, of the Fieldstone Lane right of way.
Uh, of, of the, uh, of the Fieldstone Lane right of way and in either the Coleman Road right of way. And or the parcel to be granted through, through an A N R, which is, um, has been presented subsequent to this, uh. Uh, to this modification.
And so what I could do is actually, if, if I may, this is the original approved subdivision plan showing the thirty, thirty foot radius here. At, uh, the intersection of Fieldstone Lane and Coleman Road. And I will take that down. And. Um, as we started to. Uh, look at the, the, the A N R, blow this area up. What we, what we found, if you can. See this here is that the, the stone, the father stone, which stone was right. Um, kind of at the tangent of the radius and. Um, the right of way of Coleman Road. So it was not falling squarely within the area as we had. Um. Imagine that it would be. So this is the parcel, uh, parcel A, which is to be conveyed to the town, but the stone was in fact falling. It's pretty much outside of that. So it would not clearly be part of the conveyance to the town. The, um. So the plan, um, that has been submitted and I'll just blow this, oopsie, blow this up a little bit. Shows a twenty foot radius here at the intersection of Coleman Road and Fieldstone Lane. And with some modified frontage for lot seven and area for lot seven and this somewhat modified. I'm sorry?
It's not appearing.
Oh, it's not. I'm sorry. Uh, let me, okay. Can you see it now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. So this is, this is the revised. Layout here, um, at this corner with the, the twenty foot radius. And I will take this plan down and. Um. So with that, can you see that now?
Yes.
Uh, with that revised twenty foot radius here, the father stone, which stone falls. You know, clearly within this boundary between the Coleman Road right of way and. Uh, what's currently lot seven and will be, you know, within this area to be conveyed to. Uh, to the town. Um, I will point out that the age of pavement, um, has always been back here. There's no change to the edge of pavement or to, um. Uh, you know, to any of the sightlines coming out from the road itself. So those are the.
Very good. Thank you, Martha. Um. Have we, uh, have we had any comments from the public?
Um, I have received no written comments. I see that there are a couple of, a few residents here, um.
All right, well, let me turn to the board members and then if we have any questions or comments from the public, we can, uh, address those. So, uh, Pete, do you have any, any questions or comments?
Uh, Tom, thanks for doing this and, uh, for, for, for buttoning this piece up. You know, line of sight's not affected. It just, uh. Allows clarity as to where the father stone, uh, partial should be. So that's very helpful. So that's it. Thanks. Welcome.
Uh, George, any?
Uh, yes, it makes sense to do the change as shown.
Uh, Leslie?
I'm also in agreement with both, uh, Pete and George.
Uh, Woody, how about yourself?
Yes, I agree. This is, it's the right way to go about it. So, yes.
Okay. Um, and, and do we have any members of the public or? I don't see any raised hands functions.
No, not, I'm not seeing any raised hands here.
Um, well, let me get a sense of the board, um. Uh, you, you think we're in a position to, uh, ask Martha to draft a decision on this, Pete?
I think that'd be a great idea. Thank you.
Uh, George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
I agree. So I guess that serves as a straw poll as well, right? Um, so Martha, um. All right, uh.
Would you like a motion, sir?
Yes, I would, please. Thank you.
I would give you a motion to facilitate that process.
Okay, uh, to, uh, ask Martha to draft the decision for review. All right.
That could.
Somebody's, uh, somebody's got a dog or a cat. Uh, thank you, Pete. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie, um. Uh, I, any, any further discussion on this before we vote on the motion, uh, hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pete, how do you vote? Oh, you're muted, Leslie.
Yes.
Uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so it's unanimous. Um, and I think then it only. Remains to, uh, determine a continuance state on the public hearing. Martha, um. Would, uh, is, is January fourth to, uh, to assume for you?
You know, I think that should be, I think that should be doable. This should be a pretty, pretty straightforward. Um, decision to write, not very complicated. So, and I, I, I know that there is some time sensitive activity here as, as well, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. So then I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until our, uh, January fourth. Uh, Zoom meeting at seven fifteen P M. Do we have a motion?
So vote.
Thank you, Woody. There a second for George? Thank you. Um, any further discussion, hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
And, uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so it's unanimous. Continue till the fourth at seven fifteen. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, folks. I know it's been a, a long time trying to get this together. I appreciate your patience with, with trying to get it organized the right way too. Thank you.
All right. Very good.
Development looks really good. I've taken a drive through a few times.
Oh, thanks very much. We're very proud of it.
Okay. All right, well, back to our regular, not regular, but back to the agenda, um, with the planning directors report. Um, I think, uh, next would just be the liaison reports, um, select board. Leslie, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, the select board, um. Was, um. I probably arrived a couple of minutes late and the first. Item on the agenda was, um, Marsh Meadow Lane and it was, um. Put out for continuance till the end of February, I think February twenty eighth. Um. Then, um. The next or, then there was an executive. Uh, meeting and then the next order was, um, trees on Newman Road. That need to come down for safety reasons and, um, there was, there was really a long discussion on that. Um. But it. The trees will come down and, um. There are other trees that are marked to be, to come down for the same issues. Um, throughout the town. Uh. That was it. There was no, uh. Administrate, a town administrator report that evening, um. So that the trees on Newman Road, I think there's seven or eight of them that need to come down and, uh. That was pretty much, you know, what happened after the beginning of the meeting. That's that.
All right, thank you, Leslie. Um, the, uh, Z B A, um, is meeting tomorrow night for the regular monthly meeting. They have a continued public hearing on, uh, eighty Northern Boulevard for special permit finding. Uh, to renovate an existing non-conforming single family dwelling on a lot with increase in height. It was continued from the last meeting, uh, to give the butters attorney an opportunity to submit information. Uh, so it has been something of a contentious, um, uh, hearing to date. And there's also a new hearing for, uh, sixteen Green Street. Um, uh, to, uh, construct, uh, a, an attached accessory. Uh, detached accessory apartment, uh, to convert a, uh, detached garage on the lot to an in-law apartment. And that's all I have, um, conservation piece.
Um, basically buttoned up the old town hill, uh, observation platform and then, uh, one forty. Uh, uh, so, so that's it. Thanks.
That's it. And Martha, M V P C?
A couple of things on that, um. I did attend last week, uh, the kickoff meeting for the, um. Regional multi-hazard mitigation plan update. Uh, so that is going to be, um. S- starting relatively soon, um. The town will be putting, we, we already, we have a municipal vulnerability task force in place and I think most of the people on that will be the ones who will be. Um. Working on the town's behalf on, on this project. Uh, it's being headed up by the environmental section at M V P C. Uh, tomorrow, uh, will be the, uh, December commissioners meeting and. Uh, my understanding is they're looking for, um. Approval for hiring a, a new person. Um. I did have a meeting with, uh, Lauren Kiesling from their community and economic development, um. Uh, department, uh, regarding the, um. Uh, the, uh, how's the updated, I'm sorry, that the updated the housing production plan. So we'll be going, getting into that in, uh, in January.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Martha. Um, the only other thing I see other, other businesses, next meeting hearing date Thursday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty three. I'm not sure what that is about.
What?
Do you need to discuss something about that date?
No, what was, uh, I'm sorry, where are you seeing that?
Uh, under other business on the agenda. On the page two.
I'm not saying.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the Z B A agenda.
Oh.
My bad, I'm sorry.
Okay, phew.
Literally. You're on the spot there.
It's like, what on earth?
We all thought we were crazy there first.
No, it was just me. Okay. Um. Well, on that note, uh, would anyone like to adjourn?
There's a motion.
All right, thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Um, any discussion? Um, then hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes, sir.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone, and thank you.
Good night all.
Night, everybody. Happy holidays.
Thank you, same to you.